Detroit Lake City Council has called to order. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda, which is before the council. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt the regular agenda. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda?
Item 6L.
Are there any other items? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 6L.
Submove.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded on the consent agenda. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March 12th, 2024, before the council. Does anyone in the audience or any member of the council wish to make any changes to the minutes as they're printed? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Submove.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March 12th, 2024. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I believe we have some representatives from the White Earth Tribal Council here this evening. Is there, is there one of you folks that are ready to address the council? Or do we need to, we can wait a minute.
Hey, buju, my name is Laura York from the Executive Director for White Earth Nation, and Representative Anne Sheryl Jackson will be with us shortly.
Okay, raise your hand when they come in and get my attention and we'll, we'll get you going.
Sounds good, thank you.
You bet. So, without, without objection, I'd like to jump to item 6C, and that's on the Public Works Committee. Chairman Zina.
Okay, item 6C is a donation, approving the art on a stick in our city parks. I'm gonna, we've got a member of the Arts Council here, I'm gonna have Chris Henwood please come up front and maybe explain just exactly what that is.
Sure. Thank you for allowing me to come in. Basically, what this is, is every year we, on the Arts and Culture Commission, have a project that we did last year was the power boxes in looking at 2024. We're proposing a art on a stick, which basically, when you think about anything on a stick, it's easily accessible, fun to consume theoretically. But what we are looking for is two installations at four parks in town to have a revolving art, revolving art placement for, for the city, for any art projects that we want to put through, whether it's the elementary schools, the high schools, any art groups. And these will be metal installations that we would put in there permanently and then apply artwork with a sticker on either side that is waterproof. And then over the course of the year, we would remove those and replace with new art. So, it is a, it's gonna be a fun project should we get it approved, but yeah, any questions on that?
Any questions for Chris on the project?
You could maybe tell where the locations are gonna be and how we're gonna start off, maybe with eight, but we could have maybe more dependent upon the funding?
Correct. Funding is coming through the Blading Group, so, the Blading Grant, I should say. So, we're looking at, I believe the parks are in the packet, unfortunately I don't have that.
We're gonna have, you got written down here that you're gonna have two at the Boys and Girls.
Correct.
Two at the, at the Long Lake Park, two at the South Shore Park, and two in our inner city park. And if we have enough extra money, it could move up to three each, although it's the same time of funding, whatever costs of that.
Correct. Correct.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion, Ron.
Okay, the Community Director and I said move that, we go ahead with the art on the stick project.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to approve art on a stick in our city parks. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And as long as we have Chris available, I'd like to jump to item 10A, and I'd call on Public Utilities Commissioner, Mr. Scurt. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This morning, the Public Utilities Commission met and discussed the consideration to approving plans and authorizing advertising for bids for the proposed 1.5 million gallon water tower, and I have John Pratt has graciously offered consent to giving more detail on that.
John, did you bring a picture? We want to see a picture.
I do. I'll give you a picture. I don't want to distract you while I give you a report, and then I'll let you look at the logo. Unfortunately, technology's down, or we would put it up on the screen, but I did bring a few. But just a little bit of update background where we're at here, as indicated, we're prepared to ask for authorization to bid the project. This has been a several-year endeavor to get to this point, but we're ready to go out for bids. We would bid over the next couple of months here with the idea of probably bringing those back into the June commission meeting and ultimately the council meeting for approval. After we get contracts executed and issue a notice to proceed, they may start working on the project the second half of the summer. It's a little hard to tell, you know, these contractors aren't in abundance that, that put these tanks up, so it's pretty dependent on what their workload and schedule looks like. But we could see some groundwork, grading, maybe some foundation and pile work type things this year. That also could get deferred to next year, which kind of leaves us to, you know, when is the project gonna be done and the tank commissioned? It could be as early as the, the end of next construction season in '25. More likely, I would say, it's probably gonna creep into the first half of '26 before the project's completely completed, meaning tower online, old tank demo, and all of that good stuff. So, that's where we're at with, in terms of the, the project itself. But of course, we've had quite a process going through graphics and logos, so I'll hand this out if you can bear with me. Alderman Goman just reminded me here, I'm gonna point out, I had very little, if nothing, to do with this graphic. I can't take any credit, but a little bit of explanation, this didn't just come out of left field. It was quite a process led by the Public Utilities Commission. We were fortunate enough to actually to have local community member that we just heard from, Chris Henwood, and he led that effort with the commission. And I would say there was probably no less than 50 or so iterations, some of them similar, but you know, slight variations, some of them drastically different. You know, we went through and looked at, of course, just the aesthetics of it and colors, but there's also other things when you're putting this up on a tank, trying to make sure it's actually going to work. This is gonna be up there for probably, you know, 25, 30 years, and so finding that right fit. My opinion, I think they did a great job. This is something that's workable up on a tank like this. So, kudos to Chris and the commission for getting to this point, but that's the, the image that's been selected. Certainly, Vrenell or Chris could chime in if I've missed anything here.
So, Chris, is there a logo in the back and the front, is that?
Yes. It is intended to have a roundabout, so the city, city name will be in three locations on the tower.
Okay.
And we also did vet this through the Arts and Culture Commission last week, so they had looked at it. There were, we narrowed it down to two finalists with multiple variations from that, and they selected the final, and then with the Utilities Commission this morning selected the final one.
So, the recommendation, Mike, is to approve the, what is our action?
Your, your, your approving plans and authorizing advertisement for bids.
Okay. Any questions for John or Vrenell or Chris? If not, Mike, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, item 10A, consideration to approving plans and authorizing advertising for bids for the proposed 1.5 million gallon elevated water storage facility, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the plans and authorize advertisement for bids for the new water tower. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, we have friends and neighbors from White Earth here, and so I don't know who is going to speak, but if you would come up to the podium and introduce yourself, we would appreciate it.
Good evening, welcome.
Buju, everybody. My name is Sheryl Annie Jackson, I'm the District 3 rep for White Earth Nation. The chairman couldn't make it, him and the Secretary of Treasury are now down in the cities, meeting with senators and other stuff. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to be with you today, tonight, and share our vision for the White Earth State Forest. There has been a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation around this, and I appreciate you providing this platform for the public to hear. We genuinely believe our legislation is a win-win for the citizens of Becker County. I'm reading this because the chairman put talking points, he had to leave, so I'm just reading what was given to me.
You're doing fine.
Okay, thank you. First and foremost, our goal is to preserve this state forest for the enjoyment of all. We believe our plan will do that while keeping county revenue resources in place. I know we're at the city, but it's, you know, basically the same. The current forest is only about one-third of its original size, and the park continues to get progressively smaller every time a piece of it is sold off, and every time a piece is sold off, it is closed to the public. This is a problem for local businesses that rely on tourism and the outdoor economy. It is a problem for White Earth citizens who rely on the forest for sustenance and spiritual needs. This problem will be solved by returning ownership to the White Earth Nation. Our people have been connected to this land for millennia. To us, it's more than just dirt and trees, it is Mother Earth. White Earth Nation is the only entity that can be trusted to never sell our clothes off this land. Preserving this forest also means preserving everyone's right to access and enjoy this land. We are all fully committed to doing just that. The legislation has already been amended to guarantee that the forest remains accessible for a public to enjoy forever. Not only do we want to ensure the public continues to have access to this forest, we want to improve it. We have plans to expand hiking trails and improve game populations, flora, and fauna with innovative land stewardship practices. We also want to expand and improve recreation infrastructure throughout the forest, which is what we did with the Little Elba Lake Park. Since we took ownership of this park, we have improved infrastructure, maintenance, and management. Now, this park is highly rated destination that all may enjoy free of charge. We are already doing similar work in the state forest since 2019. We have released almost 6 million fish into the lakes within the state forest at no cost to the fishermen or the state. We have built and maintained five fishing piers and have plans to build several more in the coming years, again, at no cost to the fishermen or the state. We are able to do this because we operate a fully staffed Department of Natural Resources that is second to none. We have eight conservation officers who already patrol the forest. We have trained fire and rescue teams that answer hundreds of calls and possess equipment that even the state doesn't have. We have a transportation department that can maintain the roads. We are fully staffed and ready to make this forest an even better asset for the citizens of Becker County and the city of Detroit Lakes, or anybody that wants to enjoy it, you know. In fact, the Becker County Sportsman Alliance has, has informed us, I don't know if it's the Becker County, but the Sportsman Alliance has informed us they will be testifying in our favor on our legislation at the next hearing. Our legislation also requires a five-year working group as part of the transference process that will consult with all local stakeholders to address any needs and concerns as the process moves forward. We truly want to work with everyone to make this forest a better place. All this is a win-win for the counties and the townships. By improving the forest and visitors' enjoyment of it, we improve the local economy. We can, we can achieve all these benefits while leaving the existing pill payments in place, just as we did on the Potlatch property. And that, there you can reach out to our, what is he, our lobbyist, Bill Haas? He's working on that in the, at the state capitol, but he already said that it's, it's already in place, so. And with that, I thank you for your time and would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, and the rest of the folks that are here. Anybody have a quick question? If not, again, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, have a nice evening.
I just have one, I'll, I'll put it. I just wanted to personally thank you, Representative Jackson, for coming and sharing the information and doing what you can to keep the record straight, and for the partnership and the hand that you're reaching out to better the forest itself and access to it. I'm happy personally to hear the language about the change in the legislation in terms of the land being held in perpetuity and people having access. I think that's been a big question that we've seen, you know, social media's gonna drive everybody crazy, but all of these things being debated about. So, I just wanted to personally, she's my representative up at White Earth, so I appreciate you coming, and just thank you all for taking the time to come on here today.
Have a good night.
Yes, good night, thank you all again.
Without objection, I'm going to adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed improvement of curb gutter, concrete approaches, bituminous sidewalks for 2024, and I will call on City Engineer John Pratt. John?
Public Works Director.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mayor and Council.
I can edit myself.
Again, this is our annual curb gutter, concrete approaches, and bituminous, bituminous and sidewalk repairs that we do every year. We go around, take a survey, and then we, we send it out for an annual contract, and that's what this is.
So, is there anyone in the audience that has either a question or a comment regarding the 2024 proposed improvements for curb gutter, concrete approaches, bituminous sidewalks? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. Ron?
Okay, I was gonna say the total cost of that is $93,104, and the committee reviewed this, and I moved it, we go ahead with the resolution, or in the improvements of the curb gutter, concrete approaches, bituminous sidewalks for 2024, I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the improvements for curb gutter, concrete approaches, bituminous sidewalks for 2024. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And with that, I'll reopen the regular city council meeting. Is there anyone else in the audience that has an item that they would like adjusted on the agenda? If not, we'll go right to the Community Development Committee, Chairman Volker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5A, consideration to approving or request for bid for the sale of 211 West Union Street. I'm looking at this, and I'm gonna give it a crack, Kelsey, so correct me where I screw up. This was a foreclosed prop, excuse me, not a foreclosed property, this, go ahead and take it.
Mayor and Council, yes, 211 Union Street was actually had a dilapidated house on it. We had sent them a nuisance enforcement letter, and the property owner basically responded with asking the city if they would take ownership of it. So, I think it was probably two years ago, council accepted the deed on the property. We had to do some title work with it, so we have some legal expenses, and of course, we had the expense of actually tearing down the property. So, we talked about this a little bit at CDC last night. You see in your packet, there's a bid announcement, an advertisement that's in the packet. We, in the packet, had a minimum bid of $17,000. The city actually has $22,500 and some change actually stuck into the land. It's a combination of, again, legal expenses and demolition expenses. So, I think Alderman Volker will probably hit to that, but the recommendation of the CDC was going to be to approve the advertisement for sale, but increase the minimum bid to that $22,500.
A lot more elegant, thank you. As discussed last night at CDC, we recommend approval, request for bids of $22,500 for this property, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to go out for bids, sale of 211 Union Street, minimum bid being $22,500. Discussion.
One thing to add to this was, we were accepting sealed bids until May 9th, I believe.
May 9th, and then we take the two highest bidders, and then they do have an opportunity to then increase their bid, the two highest bidders, so.
What did you say the minimum was?
$22,500.
Okay, so that's different.
Correct.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to comment on this, as you know, Detroit Lake, you've got a shortage of affordable housing for people, and this is a nice lot, it's approximately 15 feet wide, about 114 feet deep, and it'd be a great spot for a young family to start in a home. And so, I'm hoping that when you look at the price of this, it's $22,500, you know, the water sewer is already there. You know, you know what the specials are right now to build a, a new house, you're looking at $40,000, $45,000, so this is probably half the rate of what we'd need is for the specials here. You're gonna get, you might need to do a little repair, but underwater stuff, but basically, you've got a great lot with water and sewer and ready to be built on. So, I'm hoping that somebody that's looking at affordable housing that you will consider bidding on this and then build a family home there, because that's a real business.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5B, consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance 522 for the annexation of 12 acres of land, more or less, Burlington Township, and zoning tract B3 auto-oriented district at 29075 US Highway 10 and 14249 at 290th Avenue. This is the quality equipment.
Okay, is that a motion?
This is a motion, as was humanously approved for the second reading last night at CDC, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 522 for annexation of the property described in the motion. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Second reading is given, and ordinance 522 is adopted.
Thank you, Your Honor, and that's all.
Okay, we'll move on to the Public Works Committee. Chairman Zina.
Okay, the first item was, item A was for discussion, and we had a lady that came and her, her concern was with collection and disposal of garbage, and she has a small home, and she doesn't hardly even use her, her waste barrel, and so she said she doesn't know why she should have to pay for it, but when we started this recycling, it was because the Becker County, their landfill here was getting filled up, and we're having to haul everything up to Fargo, and that was getting expensive, so we started off the recycling, and it was with the idea that everybody would belong to the recycling program, and so we discussed that with her, and hopefully she understood why we have it the way it is on it, so we did have a discussion on that. And I think she's gonna talk to Schook about that too, but we want to have recycling, so everybody has it, not just here and there, otherwise it wouldn't work. So, with that, we'll move on to item B, consideration to the approval of installation of climbing rocks at the rec center. I'm gonna call on Kelsey with more detail on this.
Mayor and Council, I'd say about a year ago, representatives from the Fritz Foundation approached the park board about the possibility of doing these climbing boulders in one of our park locations. With that, there was also an offer of basically a grant from the foundation to offset some of the cost. Park Board's been discussing this, again, feels like at least a year, looking at different options, different locations, they looked at several park locations. We met with the manufacturer. At one point, we were talking about maybe spreading out the boulders into different locations, but the manufacturer really recommended putting them all in one place, so you have more effect, more options for different skill levels. So, the park board settled on the playground that's next to the rec center. There's some old playground equipment there that has been on the replacement list for quite some time, so the idea is we can probably remove a few of those pieces and then move these boulders into that location next to the rec center. The budget should be in the packet. Again, the grant or the donation from the foundation would total $75,000. We have an estimated project cost of about $100,000, so the city would be paying that, basically a $25,000 match to offset the, the cost of the boulders themselves and the installation. The installation also includes basically fall protection, the wood chips and stuff that have to be installed. So, the park board, basically at their last meeting, had recommended to the city council to consider approval.
Okay.
Okay, the committee reviewed, reviewed this project, and we go ahead and made approval for installation of climbing boulders at rec centers, and we're supposing it'll be a place for the kids to be able to do it this summer, so make motion, go ahead with it.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the installation of climbing boulders at the rec center. Discussion on the motion? Do we have wood chips or do we have rubber stuff?
We're just gonna add to the existing wood chips that are already there.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item B, consideration of resolution, seconded, assessment hearing for 2024 street rehab project, and along with Willow Springs Street improvements project at today's meeting, or at next month's meeting, and you've got a couple items there that tell, explains different situations, but I'm gonna have Kelsey explain, because we've got two different projects here, and there's one project's got a different payoff than what the other project has, I'm gonna have Kelsey explain that.
Mayor and Council, you should have a revised resolution on your desk. The change there is the resolution is in the packet, we have the same term for the whole project at 20 years. We don't do a 20-year term on basically a millinerway project or a full debt reclamation project. So, the revised resolution has two assessment rolls. One would be, again, the street rehab portion of the project, that'd be an assessment term of seven years, and then the Willow Springs project would be a term of 10 years.
Okay, and with that, we're gonna go ahead, and did you mention interest rates too, on that too?
Yes, it's five and a half percent.
It is five and a half, we had a discussion on that last night. So, with that, the committee reviewed this, and I make motion to go ahead with the assessment hearing.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to set an assessment hearing for the 2024 street rehab project and the Willow Springs project at our May city council meeting. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Next item is item E, consideration of accepting the bids for the 2024 downtown street and utility projects, improvement projects, and awarding the contract. I'm gonna call on John on this. We did have three bids coming this time, which is very good, because last fall, we had a hard time, because you just went, we get after you this time, all right, John?
That's correct. Mayor and Council, we opened bids on the West Downtown Project last Thursday, as Alderman Zeman indicated, we had three bids. All were well below our estimate. We were estimating about 3.75 million. The low bid was Hou of Detroit Lakes at 3.18, so well below good numbers. Second place bid was only $9,000 higher, so we are recommending approval.
Okay, with that, the committee reviewed this project and removed the accept the bids for the 2024 downtown street utility project, I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to accept the bid for the 2024 downtown street utility improvement project and awarding the contract to Hou. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, item F is consideration to resolution to restricting parking on a portion of Frey's E Street, and I'm gonna call on John Pratt to tell the reason for that.
Mayor and council, this is somewhat of a formality that we're required to do when we're using municipal state aid funding for a project, and this is part of the West Downtown street utility reconstruction. Essentially, there's a portion of Frey's E Street, between Lake and Minnesota, sort of the eastern half of that street, where we really don't have the space where we could allow on-street parking like usual, with the inclusion of the trail that we're gonna build on one side, intersections, approaches, and things like that. We just felt like parking would not be a good plan in that location, and so MINDOT requires that we pass this resolution as part of the process.
Okay, the public works committee reviewed this and removed for the resolution restricting parking on a portion of Frey's E Street, ISOMO.
Second.
Motion's been made second to adopt resolution restricting parking on a portion of Frey's E Street. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is G here is consideration to a memo from the Public Works Director, John King, for LED signal lights for designation replacement of bulbs. I'm gonna call on Sean Caden to explain that.
Mayor and council, yes. In your packet, you'll see a bid to replace five intersections, Roosevelt and Eighth, Roosevelt-Frey's E, Washington-Frey's E, Washington Homes, and Washington Front. Right now, all those signal lights have halogen lights. Andy with Public Utilities has purchased as many light bulbs as he can, but we are gonna be running out of them, and we will not be able to replace them. So they'll go in and retrofit these halogen with LEDs, and then there's something they have to do in the transformer also to make everything work, and that would be all five of them street lights to get them upgraded.
Okay, now, you also mentioned, Sean, that you found some extra bulbs that you didn't think you had, but so we may not have to buy all of them this year, could maybe buy some extra to that track?
Yes, I could work with Andy. There is a possibility where we could get by with only doing three this year and use them bulbs and the other two, or vice versa, and we can at least use our supply of bulbs up and maybe cut this in half and just do half this year and half next year.
Okay, now, this project overall is gonna cost about thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty, but what would it cost to replace a whole new street light? We put a brand-new one in today.
Quarter of a million to three hundred thousand?
So thirty-one thousand dollars makes pretty sense, we'll go ahead and do that. So the committee has reviewed this, and they give consideration of memo from the Public Works Director to go ahead and replace these with LED signal designation replacements and also with the bulbs, ISOMO.
Second.
Motion has been made second to replace the signal lights with new LED lights per the bid that we had. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
With this, I look at, and all four of this are some spots, but do we really need stoplights on Washington? I mean, it seems like a block away at Frey's E and McKinley, we've got one with a four-way stop, and it's still not the best, but it works. I know at Homes and Washington, we don't have any right-or-left turn lanes, so if you're the second car trying to take a right, you're sitting there for the whole cycle, using electricity, where a four-way stop might work just as well. That would save even more money.
What are the rules, John?
There are no rules, Mayor.
I like that.
Yeah. No, I mean, to address Alderman and Bokey's question, I mean, do we need stoplights on Washington? I've had plenty of thoughts, and one in particular, and it's debated, I guess, I'll say internally with staff, the one that jumps out to me that could be a candidate would be the Homes and Washington intersection. I believe it's possible that could function without a signal. It wouldn't take a lot to figure that out in terms of turning it into a four-way stop and study it a bit to see if your overall delay increases or decreases. My hunch would be it'd be the same or maybe even improved. Front and Frey's E, I have a little bit more reservation on those, but it's certainly something that we could think about further. I wouldn't want to venture, I guess, on those two. Front is kind of a mess, frankly, with the Highway ten signal there. It doesn't function very well right now. I'd have to give it some thought whether a four-way would improve or worsen that situation. So, I mean, that's sort of my commentary on it, but it's certainly something we could look at.
So, Matt, why don't we bring this up in a future public courts committee and discuss it?
Sure.
Mike, I just wanna comment, would that, does that diminish your pedestrian safety when you have that four-way traffic, when it's such a busy intersection? I mean, I see another four-way where the person starts, the car is there, and the person's, you know, you have a traffic light, you know it's your turn to go across the walk.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think, again, that's something that would have to be part of the consideration if I'm gonna venture, I guess. You're not wrong at certain situations. I think that signals could be better than four-way, particularly at larger intersections. My first reaction is, again, just kind of picking on that Homes and Washington intersection with the nodes and the speeds and whatnot, I actually think that it could be just fine at that location.
Okay, further discussion?
Well, I guess my, my whole consideration on this is looking at people walking, especially for the five months of summer, we have a lot of people down, and they're not always paying attention, and you got a light, like Jackie said, you don't want it's your turn to go where, when you're guessing four-way stops, you just don't know, but I just think for the sake of public safety, we need to have those lights.
Well, we could certainly debate it more.
As you say, if that's a rationale, we should put a stoplight at McKinley and Frey's E then.
Probably could.
I mean.
And you, and you didn't care for, for the four-way stops either, so then we leave them wide open then. So I guess I'm just saying that, as old native, if it isn't broke, then why are you ready to fix it? Because this has been working well, and we haven't had any accidents that I know of downtown where people run over.
Doesn't mean it can't work better, so let's review it.
And we had a lot to discuss, and when we did the roundabouts on public safety with the roundabout, so, I mean, I would hope we give these streets the same type of consideration.
Well, we could certainly discuss it, and I'm sure we'll come up with the best plan, so. I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion still carries.
Okay, let's go on. Before we go to John, I had item L removed, and that's consideration to approve a special event application for the Lakes Area Farmers Market, People's Park, and it's gonna be starting here on Tuesdays and Saturdays from May twenty-fifth through October twenty-sixth. The reason I took that off is because the last few years, the group has put it on the Farmers Market, they have fewer people coming to display their garden guys, and we really need, in order for us to have a great Farmers Market, and for that group to have a great Farmers Market, they need more vendors down there displaying their vegetables, it can be artwork too, but we just need more people down there, so. If you see this on TV and said, and I've been thinking about putting something down there, well, get ahold of the chamber, and they'll tell you the people to get ahold of, to put this in, and also ask the public, judge of public, how we have this thing, and it's not gonna work if they don't get enough customers, so give them a shot down there on Tuesdays and Saturdays, and let's continue making this park with the Farmers Market work out for everybody. And we haven't had a chance to discuss it with the committee, but I would make a motion to go ahead and allow that again this year, and hopefully we can have more vendors than ever.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve a special event application for the Lakes Area Farmers Market. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then I've got one more before we get to John. I've got an event here, I said, you've got, got a special event there on, it's a special event for Carver's Classic Four Disc Golf Tournament, it's gonna be held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, and it's, the time of this is gonna be from eight in the morning until five at night, and I would go ahead and make a motion that we add this event to our summary, that's ISOMO.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve a special event application for a disc golf tournament. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the last one after, I had to meet, ask John if I give us his report this month.
Mayor and council, we've probably covered a good chunk of this already, but a little bit updated, and we have a number of carryover projects still that we'll have work starting on, maybe before the next council meeting, early part of May, road restrictions going on. We could see some work on Campbell Avenue and Summit, Terry Street and Dandrew, but essentially all those are in the same place of needing turf establishment and final pavement, so those will get wrapped up over the next couple months. The street rehab project, we scheduled that hearing earlier in the agenda. The contractor has indicated that they want to get moving on that sooner than later, so we've got a pre-construction meeting scheduled here next week, and they're indicating they could start as early as, you know, later this month or the early part of May on that project, so more to come on that. Same would be true with Willow Springs, that's grouped in with that same street rehab contract. No real news to report on Southwood Shore Estates at this point, and then, of course, we recovered the West Downtown project and the water tower, so any questions?
Any questions for John on the projects? If not.
With that, I go ahead and make a motion that we accept a city engineer's just presented, ISOMO.
Second.
Motion's been made second to accept the city engineer's monthly project status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that brings us up to the Finance Committee, Chairman Josephson.
Item A is discussion regarding lease proposals for former police department. We'll bring this back for the May meeting with some sort of recommendation and decision-making in May, so stay tuned for that, it'll be a recent show for May meeting. Item B is consideration to approving the DCC cart shed project. I'll take a swing at this, and if I pull a bokey, then I'll hand over to Kelsey.
So Dickie, good shit.
So the Detroit Country Club is looking to build a new cart storage building out at their location. They've got several new carts that are showing up this year, and they need a place to store them. They've come up with a funding mechanism to pay for this, and they just need our approval since it is our property, and at the end will basically be city building. So with that, the Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval of the DCC cart shed storage project, and ISOMO.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve the Detroit Country Club cart shed project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that brings us to the Public Safety Committee, Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item on our public safety agenda tonight, and that is item A, consideration to approving a parade permit for the Becker County Fair Tractor Parade on August tenth, two thousand twenty-four. And the committee discussed it, this is an annual event, and we agreed to recommend that the permit be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve a parade permit for the Becker County Fair Tractor Parade on August tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that brings us to the liquor gambling, maybe the cannabis committee?
Thanks, Your Honor. We just had a discussion, we want more clarity from the state regarding this whole cannabis thing, so we'll just leave it at that for right now, so.
And that brings us to item eleven P. Kelsey, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, Mayor and council, I should have probably mentioned this at the Finance Committee, but there is a grant agreement and accompanying resolution for the airport. This is for the mower deck that was purchased for the new tractor that was purchased. The tractor itself wasn't eligible for a state grant, but the mower deck is. Grant is forty thousand dollars, forty thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the state, so.
Dan, you want to take that one?
Sure. So consideration to resolution approving the MINDOT state grant agreement for Detroit Lakes Becker County Airport mower. Finance Committee did not review this, but I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve the MINDOT state grant agreement for the Detroit Lakes Becker County Airport mower deck. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm proclaiming April twenty-sixth as Arbor Day and May as Arbor Month in Detroit Lakes, and I'm proclaiming May second as a day of prayer in Detroit Lakes. I don't think I need approval, I can just do it.
Yep.
I do have three appointments this evening. I would like to recommend the name of Craig Coffield to be our liaison to the Minnesota Flyers Board, and I would entertain the motion.
So, second.
Motion's been made second to approve Craig Coffield, the Gymnastics Board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Kim Betcher has turned out on the park board. I'd like to recommend the name of Elizabeth Marraquin to be replaced Kim Betcher.
So moved.
Motion's been made second to appoint Elizabeth Marraquin to the park board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also, Amy Erickson is resigning from the housing and redevelopment authority board, and I'd like to recommend the name of Patrick Bartels to replace Amy.
So moved.
Motion's been made second to appoint Patrick Bartels to the HRA board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Becker County Assessor has notified the city that the board review will be held at the Police Department Community Room on April thirtieth, starting at nine-thirty, and we have the following, Alderman, we have Alderman Josephson, Zeeman, and Bokey, along with myself, who are all certified and serve on that board, so we'll see you, the other three, at nine-thirty and the thirtieth.
Alderman and Bokey, you aren't able to.
Matt, you can't be there?
I can't be there.
But we're still a few for numbers then?
Oh, we can have one more come. One more should come. They don't have to have the certification, but one more should come.
But can we just have the three?
I don't think so.
We need one more.
You need one more? Even though they're not certified?
They don't have to be certified, only one of them has to be certified, so.
Does anybody want to come and have some fun with us?
I'll be out town, sir. Enjoy the fun.
Well, you can let me know.
Takes about an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah.
And if people are happy with their tax, they could do one every one there.
Well, I think it shouldn't happen.
I couldn't tell Matt, no.
Okay, the joint governance meeting dates are listed, and the two thousand twenty-four meeting dates are listed, and I just have to ask Kelsey how long you think we're gonna be stuck here. I mean, I know they're making progress. Any idea when they might be able to get back in? The city hall?
The current timeline is try to complete construction in May, have staff start moving in June, and then I'd say the earliest we'd have any public meetings would be July, and then we still gotta talk a little bit about the open house. Current plan is try to have an open house, like at the end of June, but we'll have to see where everything falls into place, but I want a plan on being here, out of here any urban in July.
Have we landed on a date for the, our special meeting coming up this month?
I believe we're still seeing it the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Okay. Okay. Yes, eighteenth, yes.
I'm good. Dan?
Good, thank you.
Jackie? The business of this council has come to a conclusion. The meeting's adjourned.